Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees' regular meeting dated June 8th, 2021. It is actually 7:30 PM. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Vorderer?
Here.
Trustee Stocker?
Here.
Trustee Oliniechak?
Here.
Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Phelan?
Here.
Trustee Pembroke?
Here.
We have a quorum. Trustee Desmond would like to participate in our meeting tonight telephonically. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
I'm sorry, Alex.
Motion.
Alex.
Second.
Second? Was there a second?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are you there? Desmond, can you hear me? Trustee Desmond?
I can hear you.
Good, we can hear you. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Veterans, please salute the flag.
I am the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm told there are no public comments tonight. Is there a conflict of interest or anything on this agenda tonight? There being none, we'll move on to number five on the agenda, a request for the approval of the St. Catherine of Alexandria charge on the 5K to be held Saturday, August 13th, 2021. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Motion pass.
Six on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes dated May 25th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Stocker?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak?
Yes.
New business by village trustees. We'll start in District One. Trustee Desmond, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing, hopefully you can hear me. I would just like to wish Mary Oliver, she has been a resident of Oaklawn for 71 years and will be celebrating her 100th birthday on June 16th. So I would like to wish her a very happy birthday.
Thank you, Trustee Desmond. There will be a parade honoring Mary on the 16th. They're looking for over 100 cars. They'll be meeting at 89th and Austin, be led by our police departments, is that correct, Chief? And I will be there too, to celebrate that great accomplishment of living to be 100. I hope we all make it. Trustee, District Two.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. I just want to give everyone an update on the safety act. I know that the residents of the Village of Oaklawn heard the cry for help, and I know that they did get in touch with their legislators. In the 11th hour, almost 12th hour, House Bill 3443 SA5 was passed. It was a good start for listening to the police department and the police officers, and backed by the Police Association. I know that there's some major issues that are still out there, and how the bill works is how they deferred the major issues, is they put them out to year 20, '22, '23, so things can be worked on. But I do want to let the residents know that it does pay to call your local elected representatives, and I know that it made a difference. I know that Representative Burke, Representative Flower, and Senator Cunningham all told me that they've received multiple numerous phone calls, letting our state representatives know that we in the Village of Oaklawn support our police, and we're not happy with the safety act. So I do think that this is a good first start. Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything on there?
No, actually, Trustee, I think you covered it, but there is still a lot of work to be done. I've gotten about halfway through the amended bill, and it looks like they kind of, like you said, just pushed stuff down the road, but it does look like some of the stuff that I have read, there's more reasonable wording in there. You know, it makes us more able to comply with the law than before, there were just some stuff that was put in there that there was no way we could have, like, for instance, the tasers, they limited the targeting area to where they basically rendered the weapon ineffective, I basically just have to shelf them. So there's still some work to be done, but it is progress. And I'd like to thank also the legislators, Burke and Cunningham, as I reached out to them too, and they reached out to me for input, so, and I'd like to thank our residents that helped us too. Thank you.
Now, one of the key things in reading this legislation I didn't see, they call it a safety act. I didn't see anything in there about protecting a police officer when he is on the line and somebody is spitting at them, verbally assaulting them. There was no language that protected the police officers, they were doing their job. And I will tell you that that's very, very concerning, if they want to call it the safety act, and they're not doing anything to help the police officers in their job. So I know that this board and the residents of the Village of Oaklawn will continue to follow this, and we will continue to support our police department. You guys do a great job protecting us, we need to continue to do our work, making sure our legislators know that we support our police. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Oliniechak. Hello?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple reminders, just in regards to some of the events that we have coming up. We will have our next meeting after these events, so I just kind of wanted to put out to the residents. The Sunday concert, our first Sunday concert will be held on June 27th, right here at the Village Green, and that will start at 7:00 PM. Then the Fourth of July Parade, the Fourth of July Parade will be held on Saturday, July 3rd, starting at 4:00 PM. This will start in the 5th third parking lot across from the whistle. So if we can get our residents all the way down there, and that's where the, that's where the start of it will be. That evening, we'll have another concert on the green that will happen at 6:30. South City Revival will be playing from 6:30 to 10, also right here on the Village Green. So those are the two reminders I wanted to make sure everybody knew about before our next meeting, because they will be over with. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee, Mayor. Trustee Pembroke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Thank you. Trustee Stocker?
Yeah, I just want to mention to those folks that'll be watching and listening at home is that we're back in the boardroom, we're sitting on the dais, we're within inches of each other, there's a gallery of people in the room, and boy, is it good to be back. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Stocker. Trustee Phelan?
I can't follow that, nothing's leaving.
Thank you, Trustee Phelan. Village managers report.
Good morning, Mayor, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon, yes.
Mayor and Board. Yeah, a couple items, the first item, I'd like to bring Chris Lavoy up to the podium so he can talk about, as all Oaklawn residents know, and this board knows for sure, about the flooding issue that Oaklawn has and has had for years. So, the board and the former mayor took on the responsibility of hiring Chris and have Chris come out and do a study to mitigate the issues that we've had, and I think his presentation tonight will clarify that process for you. So I'll turn it over to Chris.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for having me. Just recently, we had Congressman Marie Newman here at the village to discuss funding opportunities for various projects throughout the village, in particular, some of the stormwater related issues. And I have to tell you that I was very impressed with her navigating through some of the funding opportunities that she has already in process, bills that she already has processed that are under review. And the two, a couple takeaways from that was obviously, number one, her position on supporting projects in this area, in particular, the support that I felt, that she was very sincere about finding any way possible that she could help us. I put together a little summary for you here, just a bullet point list of the takeaways. After she was here, village staff and I, and some of the trustees got together and we huddled up, and we put together a plan that's specifically going to address her bullet points that she came up with. Two very significant things was, number one, she asked for a shovel-ready project, because she has a bill right now that she could apply funds to, that she would like us to deliver, the village to deliver, a shovel-ready project. Number two, she asked us for a comprehensive summary of the overall projects that would be involved in some of these large-scale stormwater-related issues, in particular, Stony Preserve. So, she also requested, what do I think that the funding amount is, and I think I got a pretty good chuckle out of the room, because I asked her for $50 million, and, you know, whatever you could do to meet that goal, we could solve the problems here in Oaklawn. And then she came back and asked me, well, what would you take? And I tell you, I told her 49.5. So, but what we're doing here, and what you have on your, front of you is a summary, where I know full well that I'm not going to have Congresswoman Marie Newman walk through that door with $50 million. But I do know, from the takeaway from those meetings, Chris' money's available, not only with the current bill, but on some other grant programs and other things that are happening in Washington. And I want to deliver, we want to deliver specifically what she asked for, and that is the overall summary of what it's going to take to do Stony Creek, and then what is it going to take to get her a project that's going to be shovel-ready for funding immediately? That will be the best impact. Now, the project that we selected wasn't one of the ones that MWRD included in their study. What we did do was we looked at it as part of our work, and the proximity to the automotion site, and adding storage that would be a direct impact to that particular site in that area would be the most benefit and the least amount of impact to the community. So, we are looking at our shovel-ready project of expanding the detention volume behind Mariano's significantly, probably six acre feet or more in that pond by relocating those pipes and consolidating those ponds, and broadening the capacity in that pond. That's the shovel-ready project I'd like to deliver to Congresswoman Newman, and with all budgeting, and we're going to be shovel-ready. And then deliver her the executive summary that would deliver her our phased program of what we would do in Stony Creek, depending upon where the funding comes from and how much money would be coming. So we want to be ready for her moving forward, and now she put the ball on our court, and we need to deliver. So this is the summary you have on your agenda tonight, on the consent agenda, item W, that would give you, that's the proposal that we put together for the village, that is to deliver both of those pieces. One, it would be the summary of the, basically, a stormwater management master plan for this area, number one, and number two, the shovel-ready project that we'd get funded. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Chris, I just have a comment. I was at that meeting, when I looked at the number of studies that have been done by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, we could have done this project twice over by the studies that they've produced, but not delivered in. So it's amazing to me that we spent so much money and still have no results. I really look forward to somewhere, some projects where we get in and actually put a shovel in it, and I appreciate the work you've done. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I could go two steps further. One is during our review with MWRD of the relocation of that sewer behind the Mariano's that bifurcates the detention pond, they were very supportive. As we reviewed the work that they've done, and those five or six projects that they came up with, they didn't have that included in their area, but that was something that they would support. And number two, this excavation of Stony Creek Preserve was already identified in a study that was done by the Army Corps of Engineers, and it just hasn't been done. And why hasn't it been done? Because the money wasn't there. So we are aggressively pursuing grant funding and working with Congresswoman Newman to bring funding to get started on the shovel-ready project and get those segments released as funding presents itself.
Chris, would you explain what this sheet depicts? I don't understand the phasing.
Sure, the phasing is, but what I'm saying is, is that I'm not expecting her to give me $50 million. I'm expecting her to come maybe with some money this year, next year, three-year program, and work on it. What I want to be able to do is I want to be able to do this excavation in phases as money's become available. So I've identified, I'm going to put four or five different projects in, and it's one overall project, but I know I'm not going to be able to build it all, I'm going to be able to build it a piece at a time. So that's what that represents.
So Phase Two, Phase Three, and Phase Four are actually excavations of Stony Creek?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Chris, I just want to make a comment as well, echoing what Bud was talking about. This, second to public safety, I think this, we can all agree, is probably the number one issue, both from a cost, on multiple levels, cost to residents, inconvenience, quality of life, danger in many situations. And to Bud's point, this has been, all we hear about and have heard about for 20 years is studies that, and nothing really has changed, and we think one, once a study is done, it's the study, right? And to your point, I think I, the last time you were here, I mentioned that 15, 16 years ago, we were talking, why don't we just dig that creek deeper? Seemed like the most sensible thing to do, the only thing you're going to interrupt is wildlife, and probably not much of that. So I think it's important as a board, I know we just did this with some other measures, Mayor may be in charge here, to get a letter out to Marie Newman, Congressman Newman, if we haven't already. Oaklawn is the second-largest constituency, third congressional district, behind the city of Chicago.
That's correct.
And, you know, we're hearing now, you know, infrastructure bill in the multiple trillions of dollars, you know, $50 million probably sounded like a lot of money a long time ago, but relatively speaking, we have a brand-new congressperson looking to make an impact, second-largest constituency. I agree with you, I think we should push for as much as possible, and this will impact positively thousands of people in the congressional district. So I think if we can get a letter out to her, thanking her from the full board, you know, acknowledging the meeting that took place, and stay on this, thank you for doing that for us.
Yes, and thank you for the comments. I also think that that letter could include that we aren't going to deliver, we're going to deliver those projects, we're going to have shovel-ready projects delivered to her, and we want to continue to work with her and not let that phone go dead. We're going to be in communication with her on a regular basis, and we're going to let her know, I'm going to turn this around so we can get a shovel in the ground.
And as we've talked, I'm sorry, Alex, one more point, as we've talked about before, the executive director of MWRD is a long-time Oaklawn resident, from Trustee Stocker's district, and a stone's throw from these phases you're speaking of. And I, we saw some correspondence where he was responsive, effectively telling us to continue to work through the local representative, but, you know, if and when there's a time to elevate, he would know better. Jeff, you know, please don't hesitate to say we need some, we need some politics now, we need calls from electeds to move a ball further along.
Mr. Mayor? Chris, I, first of all, I've been working with this board for 16 years on this very subject, and as Trustee Phelan mentioned, and Trustee Stocker mentioned, you've heard a lot of different comprehensive plans. Now, I know that you were brought to the table to take a look at that automotion property, and then low and behold, you were able to take a look at how Stony Creek and the water levels there, and you bring a lot of experience to the table, and I appreciate everything that you have done. And I know that this is, as Trustee Phelan has said, the number one issue that affects all of Oaklawn. We're all unified on this, whether you're living in the northern end of Oaklawn or the southern end of Oaklawn, the eastern or western, how this water goes through, especially, and I got to see that the proposal of the retention for the 100-year, we hear the 100-year rain, unfortunately, being a trustee for 16 years, we've seen the 100-year rain like five or six times. So we're seeing more frequency of rain, so I like all the things that you have done and the different approach that you've taken, along with the attention that Congressman Newman is bringing to this, and as Trustee Phelan has said, we in Oaklawn deserve this. This is a quality-of-life issue, and I know that this board is unified in support of getting this done. So when you say shovel-ready, and we're getting very hopeful with everything we've read, and all the signs seem to be that MWRD is working with Army Corps of Engineer, which is working with our congressional people, when do you think that, from a timeframe of this moving forward, when do you think we can see shovel-ready and shovel-moving?
I will have the shovel-ready plans completed in 45 days. We'll have the tablecloth ready for her for funding. The bill that she's considering now, that she targeted for funding now, because I have a bill under review, and I have a meeting coming up, literally in two weeks, to address this and position correctly where the funding would go, it's an active bill, I do not think it's going to be long.
So you actually think that spring of 2022, we will be moving forward?
Yes.
That's realistic.
That is realistic.
You heard it here first, spring of 2022, so. And I only, I only bring that up because, get a turning signal put at Central and Southwest Highway took about 12 years. So I know that if we continue to look at this issue village-wide and continue to work, and especially when we have talented people like yourself looking at it from a different angle, I'm very confident from everything I've seen that we should be able to see progress on this. And if it goes in 2022, what type of relief would we see in 100-year rain? Will it take six months, a year?
What I'm really looking at, it is somewhat difficult, I could maybe have a meeting separately to talk about the technical issue, but basically, what we have here is a concept where if the floodplain is at elevation 100 now, according to the current mapping, and I do this excavation without doing anything else, without any development, without doing anything, that floodplain, you would think, would be reduced. So the spread of the floodplain, the properties that are impacted just by the excavation of that preserve, the floodplain will be lowered. That means that automotion site, my real target here, the automotion site, right now, it has floodplain on it. In doing this work, I want to remodel it, which I haven't done yet, which is part of the work that we're going to do, I want to see what the reduction is in the floodplain. That means that, you know, if we get it out of the floodplain, there's no mitigation requirement to develop it. And not only that, but if the trustees would consider that to be a recapture fee, because anybody that comes in has to put money towards detention of their project. So actually, we're providing the storage and providing the benefit.
You're getting way too out there, I'm thinking about the residents that live off of 103rd Street.
What I'm saying is.
Now will not have to worry about heavy water when the two, three-inch rains.
Not only that, but what about the properties that are in the floodplain now that has to pay flood insurance?
Correct.
And if I take that, the limit of that floodplain that was here, and I take it to here, well, all those people that are taken out of the floodplain would no longer need flood insurance.
No, it's exciting, and it's just the beginning of huge opportunity for this village, so I appreciate all that you and your.
Yes, thank you.
Chris, this is probably the best study I've seen in the years, and the most realistic to accomplish. Of course, it's all based on funding, hopefully Marie Newman can deliver some federal funds, and we can get this going. All the past studies failed simply because there was no money when they were done. We need to get the money to get your study done, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, and as I have communicated to a few on the board, I have come to the decision to step down as village manager. It's a tough decision. I think, I appreciate the opportunity the board gave me, but at this point in time, I think it's better that I retire, as I wanted to do back in August when I retired as chief, and I was asked to step into the role and carry the village through until we could get through the tough time of COVID, and I think we've done that. As I said before, I think we're seeing the light on the other side of the tunnel, as indicated by us all sitting on the dais today and the crowd we have. I'd like to thank the board personally for giving me that opportunity, and I'd also like to thank the staff that made it possible for us to get the job done. So thank you all.
Randy, the thanks goes to you. Years and years of excellent police work, leadership, stepping into this job at a difficult time, I can't think of a better person that could have done the job, and you should be very proud of yourself, I'm proud to know you.
Could I just make a comment? I understand that Randy just bought himself a new putter today, and there are desires to get him on the pro tour, so you may see him there very soon, look forward to it. Greatest luck, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could add too, and I'm hopeful this isn't your last official meeting, because nobody's prepared for comments, but it might be. I was joking with Randy recently, and I think one of the reasons he's pulling the trigger now is he's, with each passing day, he's getting better and better at the job, and before he gets too good and we don't allow him to leave, and I mean that in all sincerity. I've sat in meetings a year ago where you would basically say, well, it's not an area I'm familiar with, tiffs or incentives, or, you know, and one of these last meetings we sat in, you would have thought you were talking to somebody who's been doing this for 30 years. So I think you're young enough, and maybe you shouldn't shut the door on this completely, and if nothing else, be a consultant for people in this capacity, because I think you've done a great job. And as we know, an organization like this, and not just because it's government, but government doesn't help, personnel is difficult, bargaining units and rules and legislation that, you know, prohibits us from doing what we might do in the private sector when we're up against challenges, it's, my estimation, probably 80% of the job. And you spent 30 years dealing with just that, so I think we were very fortunate, and I'd like to echo with the mayor and what Bud said, you really did us a great service carrying us through this, and hopefully it's not the last time we're going to see you.
No, no, for sure.
Tom, I had a conversation with him today, he's not going completely away, he's here for, leading us into the next phase.
Did you get him a phone that works on the golf course?
I was just going to say, from the golf course. And I'm happy to accept you from the golf course.
Yeah. Anything else? Anything else, Randy?
No, thank you, thank you, Board.
All right, we're going to move on to number nine, the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routine, and they have been brought forward in the direction of the Board of Trustees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, a request of the trustees' approval in the direction of the Fire and Police Commission to hire one patrol officer from the current eligibility list due to the retirement and pending disability hearing. B, a request Board of Trustees' approval and direction to the Fire and Police Commission to hire two firefighter paramedics due to one retirement and one resignation. C, request to approve zoning and planning commission referral for an impervious surface variation for 4059 with the 106th place, Paul Malinsky is the petitioner, was approved by P and D, seven and zero, and D is an ordinance approving that. E is a request to approve zoning and planning commission referral for an impervious surface variation for 116 Kaminsky, William Fairman is the petitioner, P and D approval, seven to zero, and F is an ordinance approving that. A request to approve zoning and planning commission referral for a lot width and lot variation for 9,000 South Central Avenue, Robert Knapp is the petitioner, seven, zero approval by P and D, and H is an ordinance approving that. I is a request to approve zoning and planning commission referrals of an impervious surface and second driveway variation for 9325 South Sayer, Garcia Canis is the petitioner, P and D approve that, seven to zero, and J is an ordinance to approve that. K is a request to approve zoning and planning commission referral for a special use permit, tower setback variation, tower separation variation, tower design variation, tower height variation, building corner, side yard variation, fence height variation, and fence material variation for 9801 South Massasoit. Our Oaklawn Regional Emergency Communications is requesting that, and that was approved by Planning and Development with a seven, zero vote. I is an ordinance approving that. M, an ordinance 20. M, an ordinance 211154 authorizing the sale of one surplus vehicle that has reached its useful lifespan. N is an ordinance 211155 amending a section of Title II, Chapter 22, entitled Liquor Licensing and Review Commission. O is an ordinance 211156 amending Title IX, Chapter IV, Article E, entitled Use and Consumption Tax, Water Use and Consumption Tax of the Oak Lawn Village Code. P, ordinance 211157 approving the First Amendment to the Redevelopment Plan and Project Area for the Village of Oak Lawn Patriot Station, Tiff District, and the addition particles, parcels thereto. Q, ordinance 211158 approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Oak Lawn, Oak Lawn Community High School District 227, and Oak Lawn Hometown School District 123 pertaining to the First Amendment to the Patriot Station Tiff Plan and Project Area. R, ordinance number 2021-1159 amending Title III, Chapter 29, entitled Video Gaming. S, Resolution 311134 approving and authorizing the Village of Oak Lawn Use of Community Development Block Grant Cares Act, CDBG-CV3, grant funds for the COVID-19 Small Business Loan Program. T is a resolution 2111 approving the bid of Bravo Services Incorporated for Custodial Services from July 1, 2021 to July 31, 2023. U is a resolution 211136 approving the bid of M&amp;J Ashfall Paving pursuant to the 2021 Concrete Repair Program. V is a resolution 211137 approving Lindell Brothers Incorporated to contract to perform the 2021 Street Program. W is a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with CM Lowy and Associates, Incorporated, to perform certain engineering services pertaining to the stormwater project. And X, Resolution 211140 approving the bid of Mizro Mizro Insurance Services Incorporated, a lion-owned company for insurance broker services. A motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Almost ran out of letters.
We did. We got down to X. Okay, any discussion?
I'd like to have K and L removed from the agenda.
Any other? Madam Clerk, would you call a vote on all but K and L?
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?
Yes.
Okay. K is a request to approve the Zoning and Planning Commission referral for a special use permit, tower setback variation, tower separation variation, tower design variation, tower height variation, building corner, side yard variation, fence height variation, and fence materials at 9801 South Massasoit, requests by the Oak Lawn Regional Emergency Communication Centers. And L is an ordinance to approve that. A motion?
Motion approved. Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, Ms. Mayor. First of all, I want to tell you that I'm completely supportive of building a new OREC Center. OREC is the 911 Center. We cooperate with many communities in the area to dispatch police and fire. They do a great job, but they've run out of room. They're crowded where they are, and they should move. But I want to show you where they're moving. This map is hard to see, but right here is 98th Street. This is Massasoit, and Central is this way. This is within 50 feet of the commuter rail line that has trains going through at 50 miles an hour. It has a lot of freight traffic. There's a water tower that it's shadow of. I come from a background of Commonwealth Edison, and when we build something that's going to be necessary for the safety of the community, we don't build it within 50 feet of a railroad track, especially a high-speed unguarded railroad. We also don't build it in the shadow of a water tower. And I've been preaching this for a while, and I just wonder why in our infinite wisdom, with all the property available in Oak Lawn, we've decided to take this particular property, which is very difficult to believe they can guard properly, and who's going to call 911 when a train derails or when the water tower falls? I just don't understand it, and I'd like to have an answer to those questions before we approve this motion. I want this building built. I want it built soon, but I'm really concerned about building it here. Thank you.
All right. You know, this has been researched for a number of years. Many, many sites have been looked at. Bud, you were part of that process.
I agree it has, and I picked the wrong one.
Well, Deanna, you want to comment on this? You're Dana's our Emergency Communications Center Coordinator, and she's very, very involved over the years in this concept development and site selection. Deanna?
Sure. So Trustee Stalker, you're right. I mean, we did look at various sites in the village that were available at the time. Most of the sites that we looked at were not, they didn't have enough space. We're not, we're tax exempt, we're a public entity. The sites that were available, they had an opportunity for investment. So to grow Oak Lawn, we want, you know, the tax dollars to keep coming in. So property that is bringing in tax revenue or potential revenue for taxpayers isn't, you know, ideal. I mean, we'd rather keep that on the tax roll. When this property was brought to our attention, we did have an engineer come look at it, the consulting firm that we deal with, the architectural firm, they did a survey, they did a site study, and they have built towers next to water, you know, other water towers. There's other centers that are near a railroad track, to be honest. The building is supposed to withstand. It's a solid concrete. It's supposed to withstand any natural disaster. They claim it can get hit by a train. So I don't necessarily, we want to keep it in Oak Lawn. The Joint Board would like to keep it in Oak Lawn. And when I refer to Joint Board, it's we dispatch for, as trustee pointed out, we have six police departments and eight fire departments that we dispatch for. And they're all in agreement that the Village of Oak Lawn is our, it's our biggest, you know, we're our biggest customer, right? We're the biggest in the Southland. It's a regional center. We'd like to keep it in the Village of Oak Lawn. And it's not costing, you know, any more taxpayer dollars. We're using our capital reserve to fund it, loan to do that with. So the other opportunity could have been to go and explore, you know, Village of Hodgkins or Elsip. But the majority agreed that this is an investment, a long investment. We've always been with the Village of Oak Lawn. We've been located in this building since it was built to keep it here for the residents and to, you know, to provide that. So we did have an opportunity to look at other things, and some of it that may have worked, you know, wound up being sold or, you know, I guess a better option for, you know, keeping tax revenue coming in. I mean, I don't.
Just to piggyback on that real quick, Diana, we did have a public meeting last night. The engineers were there. There was a lot of good explanation, as Mayor Vorder could probably attest to. He was there to listen to the proper plan. As Diana mentioned, they they have built these types of facilities in DeKalb on public property, which is where the water tower is. It does make sense to me. It does look great. It's going to bring a better look to that community than it currently has in that space. They've done a great job with the in and out of the employees at that lot. It will be a quiet type of place, and they will come and they will do their job. One of the biggest points from last night were the tower and the new tower that's going up. Our current tower that 911 utilizes also has Sprint, AT, T-Mobile on it. So sometimes when they have to come and fix things, sometimes things get damaged. The new tower that would be going up next to the water tower, where the building is located, will bring a safety first issue with their communications, which will, you know, not be able to be damaged by others at that point, so.
Let me suggest that I just stated that I work for Commonwealth Edison, and we have a belt and suspenders approach. What is the, we build transmission towers in railroad right of ways. The reason we do that is you're right, the land is inexpensive, but we always have a switching probability where we can switch around any accident that occurs at any railroad bed. What is the workaround for the 911 center? I don't see one. You have one 911 center. How many communities do you serve?
We serve eight fire and six police. And we do have, let's say there's a giant natural disaster, nobody can do it. Our backup center at Southwest Dispatch, and they're located in Palos Heights.
Which is not even close to as capable as what.
Yeah, and it doesn't need to be. It's a backup center. So currently, even if we have an overflow of 911 calls, we call communication. It goes into another center typically further away from a center that's near you in case of a natural disaster.
Diana, I strongly support the reconstruction of an OREC 911 center. I just don't support it at this location because of the proximity to a water tower and a train. All right? That's what I wanted to say. And I will vote no.
Just one more thing for the record. We had a small group of residents from the area, okay, at the public hearing, and I think they came prepared to fight it, but after Diana's presentation and our engineer's presentation, I think they left here satisfied.
I would have been happy to be here last night, but I was in Grant Park doing, working. Grant Park, Illinois.
Can't be out in south. Yeah, you can't be everywhere.
If I could piggyback off that too, Mayor and Board, I'd also like to remind the residents that the majority of this funding is not coming from Oak Lawn, but is coming from the consolidation aspect of all of the communities that are involved in the consortium of the groups. So it's not a total hit to the village budget. That will be spread out among all the communities that are involved in that. So how many, Diana, do we have on that? Is it 11?
So there are six members of the board, but it's not even part of the budget. We already have capital reserve that we collect annually, and that's what we'll be using to fund. So it's, it'll be seamless as far as a budget goes.
Whether it's built here or elsewhere.
Correct.
Andy, you, yeah, Andy, Andy, he lives right there.
No one called me for a meeting.
Well, the notices go out to all residents within 300 feet by village ordinance on every one of these.
924, that's pretty close. Is it not?
Oh, would you step up to the podium, Andy?
This is the first I've heard of it.
I live at 9724 South Massasoit, 52 years. I, this is the first I've heard of this. I know we haven't had meetings, but I never was told about this. None of my neighbors were because they would have asked me about it.
Well, we had neighbors here.
I'm not saying you didn't, but not me.
So the notices went out in compliance with the ordinance.
I'm just saying, nobody's.
Well, maybe you live outside the 300. Yeah, we welcome your comment, Andy, but.
I'm just saying.
Not appropriate at this time.
No, I'm just saying that that's a cul-de-sac. Where, how are you going to get traffic there?
No, Andy, that is all designed. That was all presented last night at the public meeting.
I wish I knew about it.
Well, I can't, can't go back in time.
Thank you.
But anyway, I think most of the residents that came were very satisfied with the plan. The building is beautifully constructed. It cosmetically will improve that piece of property. It'll actually hide the railroad tracks and quiet some of the train traffic. Those were the type of things discussed last night. Any more discussion on the issue? Would you call the vote, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Stalker?
No.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond? Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. Number 10, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding requirements and awarding J&amp;J Newell Concrete Contractors Incorporated a contract for 2021 50/50 sidewalk program. We require a two-thirds vote on this. Is there a motion?
Motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 11, proposed reassignment to trustees committees and liaisons. Trustee Phelan and Trustee Olenychak have this on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, roll call.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the village clerks report?
Yes. We have the approval of disbursement resolution number 2021-11D in the amount of $6,921,282.72. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the bill.
Second?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. No other new business.
Okay. Village Presidents' Report. A, a request to approve a liquor license and review commission referral to increase the number of Class N liquor licenses that can be issued in the Village of Oak Lawn for Cardinal Liquor Barn 9620 Southwest Highway. Jim Shiraz is the petitioner. And B is an ordinance increasing that number of liquor license. Motion?
Motion moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Alex?
Okay.
Call the vote.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
C is a request to approve the liquor license and review commission referral to increase the number of Class F liquor licenses and Class N liquor license that can be issued in the Village of Oak Lawn. Shake Shack 4071 West 95th Street is the petitioner. And D is an ordinance approving that request. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
A second?
I'll second.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?
Yes.
Motion approved. I would like to take the time to congratulate the Oak Lawn VFW Post 5220 for their Memorial Day event. In all the years that I've been attending that Memorial Day event, I've never seen a larger and bigger crowd. I want to thank all the residents that came out to recognize those who gave their life in the protection and defense of your freedoms. And I would also like to congratulate a gentleman by the name of Mike Surf and the Oak Lawn Raiders. And too many businesses really to list for their commitment to our police department and fire department. They had a first responder walk over at Lake Shore Park. It's called the Annual Blue Ribbon Walk Saturday. Couple of hundred people were there. This gentleman has been doing this now for seven and eight years. It's only grown larger. And in this day and time, recognizing our public safety officers and our 911 dispatchers is more critical than it's ever been. So congratulations, Mike Surf. Okay, executive session 2021-9 for the purpose of discussing, one, approval of the closed meaning minutes of 2021-08 dated May 25, 2021. And two, the setting of price for the sale or lease of property owned by a public body. Do we have a motion?
Motion moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenychak?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Malo?